Well, she won't get fired, but she won't get to make any announcements anymore. So we've had our one night with Amber. So, uh, listen, we do appreciate you being here so much. I hope that you were able to enjoy the holiday season. And I know a lot of people have been sick and certainly been in our house. And hopefully you've been able to stay away from it. Or if you have and you're quarantined and you're doing all right. So hopefully we can through all this thing. Um, so tonight we begin a new study entitled, How God Makes Rocks. And much like last time, we did a character study of the life of David. Tonight, we're going to begin a character study of the life of Simon Peter. Now I do want to say one thing to you in advance, and that is, we are also beginning again next Tuesday with our Tuesday Men's Bible Study Luncheon, which is something that we have historically done here at First Baptist Jackson. We had to suspend because of COVID. And I want you to know that they're going to be teaching the exact same thing on Tuesday Men's Bible Study as we're teaching on Wednesday Nines. And so you are a little bit ahead on Wednesday nights. So the good news is if you have to miss a Wednesday night, you can catch up the following Tuesday. So that way we're able to be able to try to reach as many men as we possibly can. So let's begin tonight with the word prayer, and then we will begin with our study. Father, we vow before you tonight, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here together, the opportunity to study your Word together as men. Lord, I pray that you will continue to shape us to be the men that you want us to be as we study how you make rocks or help us to allow ourselves to be made by you into who you desire us to be. So even tonight, as we study your Word, we pray that you will just grant us insight, not only in the meaning of the text, but most importantly into who you are and how you work in our lives. So Lord, we present ourselves to you, asking you to shape us and mold us. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. You have your copy of the Word of God, you can begin by turning to John, Chapter 1. John, Chapter 1. Uh, now, I don't know about you, but I am the third of four children in my house. I have two brothers and one sister. My oldest brother Art, which if you know, is eight years older than me. And I'll say that again, eight years older than me, because he likes to tell people that I'm the older brother, but he is eight years older than me. Uh, I have a sister who is six years older than me, and then I have a younger brother who's three years younger than me. And so, you know, I was always kind of a middle child. Now, my mom used to say she didn't have any middle children. She had two sets of two, and I think she tried to do that to avoid middle child problems. We'll say it didn't work, but it was a good thought nonetheless. But anyway, I was kind of in the middle, you know, there in my family. And so being eight years younger than Art, mostly growing up, I was a nuisance to him, right? It's kind of like the nap you just can't get rid of. And so as brothers would do, the way he would solve the nap problem that he had was to swish it. And so, well, he beat me up all the time, you know, when we were smaller. And he had the upper hand, he was bigger than me, he was stronger than me. And so, you know, I took my fair shares of whoopings from him. Now, my sister, again, being six years older than me and being the only girl in the family, you know, she was able to have the advantage of always having daddy on her side, regardless of what she did. And so she would kind of instigate and instigate and instigate and instigate. And I knew I couldn't do anything to her because she was a girl, but she would instigate and instigate and instigate. And finally, I would react, daddy would step in, whip me, and you know, I just, I just never could win, you know, being in the hood. And so I have a younger brother, right, three years younger than me. And so as any middle brother would do, who gets beat up by his older brother and his older sister, well, I'd beat up my little brother, right? I mean, you just kind of take it out on them. You dish out what you've been taking for the last several years. And so, well, I used to just, you know, just bully him and beat him up and wrestle. And he just always had the upper hand. Till I come home from college, after I'd gone to Mississippi College in Birmingham, Alabama, come home from college, and when I come home from college, my little brother had grown to six foot four, 280 pounds, and had become the high school state wrestling champion in the state of Alabama. And so as soon as I get home from college, I set my legs down on the floor, and my little brother picks me up, throws me down the steps, begins to fold me up like a clown would fold balloons, and just did stuff to me that's illegal in half the states of America. And so, you know, I just never could win. That's what it's like growing up in a house of brothers. But you know what? I love my brothers and my sister. And I would do anything in the world for them, and I always want what's best for them. Tonight, as we begin this study of the life of Peter, we'll see that Peter's real story begins with the influence of one of his brothers. So in John, Chapter 1, beginning in verse 35, the scripture says this. Again, the next day, John stood up with two of his disciples. And looking at Jesus as he walked, he said, behold, the Lamb of God. The two disciples heard him speak, and they followed Jesus. And they, Jesus turned and seeing them following, said to them, what do you seek? And they said to him, Rabbi, which is to say when translated, teacher, where are you staying? He said to them, come and see. They came and saw where he was staying and remained with him that day. And that was about the 10th hour, which would be the 4:00 PM our time. One of the two who heard, excuse me, one of the two who heard John speak and followed him was Andrew, Simon Peter's brother. He first found his own brother Simon and said to him, we have found the Messiah, which is translated, the Christ. And he brought him to Jesus. Now, when Jesus looked at him, he said, you are Simon, the son of Jonah. You should be called Cephas, which is translated, a stone. We begin there. So in verse 35, we see where John, and this is a reference to John the Baptist, is doing what John was always destined to do. And that is, he was pointing people to Jesus. You remember in the Christmas account that the angel appears before Zacharias and Elizabeth, who are a priestly couple who were unable to have any children. And as Zacharias was in the temple according to the order of his division, the angel appears before him and tells him that his wife Elizabeth is going to have a child. And this child would be the forerunner of the Messiah. And so we see from the very beginning in John the Baptist's life that God's plan for John the Baptist was to prepare a way for the coming of Jesus. He was born to point people to him. That's exactly what he's doing in verse 35 as an adult. We also see in verse 35 that John had accrued a following of his own, yet he continued to be faithful to what he was called to do. And so he stood with two of his disciples in verse 35. And in verse 36, he looked at Jesus and said, behold, the Lamb of God. Now you know messianic language in that, right? I mean, you think about the prophet Isaiah, who talked about how the Messiah would be a servant who would suffer. He would be led as a lamb to the sword. And so John the Baptist is making the point that Jesus is the one that God has sent to be the sacrifice for our sins. Now, two of the disciples, pay attention, and began to respond. Verse 37, two disciples heard him speak, and they followed Jesus. And Jesus turned and seeing them, said to them, what do you seek? And they said to him, Rabbi, where are you staying? Now, in asking where are you staying, they're not really asking what place are you staying at. The question in the original language has the idea of, may we come and spend time with you? Jesus said to them in verse 39, come and see. You notice that Jesus doesn't respond by telling them exactly where he's staying, but Jesus is answering in the affirmative, yes, you can come, spend time, getting to know me. They came and saw where he was staying and remained with him the whole day. Excuse me. One of the two who heard John speak and followed him was Andrew, Simon Peter's brother. Now, remember, and John is writing about 50 years after this event had taken place. So he kind of gets a little ahead of himself there when he names Simon Peter, because he hasn't been introduced to us yet. But he assumes that the readers know exactly who that is, and so he's telling the story. He first found his own brother Simon and said to him, we have found the Messiah, translated, the Christ. So now Andrew is pointing Peter to Jesus. He brought him to Jesus, and when Jesus looked at him, and then we're looked in the original means to gaze at. So he didn't just glance at, but he gazed at Simon. And he said, you are Simon, the son of John. So he calls him by name. Now, one of the things that's always important for us to remember, and we see it over and over and over in Scripture, is that God knows more about us than we know about ourselves. Up to this point, remember, Simon had never met Jesus. But Jesus not only calls him by name, but even knows to whom he belongs. You are Simon, son of John. But then he says, you should be called Cephas, which is translated, a stone. Now, the name Cephas or Peter, Cephas is the Aramaic, Peter is the Greek, means a rock. And so upon meeting Jesus for the very first time, Peter learns that Jesus knows exactly who he is. He knows to whom he belongs. But Jesus also knows who Peter will one day be. So this calling from Jesus to Peter was ultimately a calling to a journey with himself as he turns him in to who he had always created him to be. Let's stop here for a second, and let's get a handle on Peter, right? He's John's son. He has a brother named Andrew. Now, we don't learn this in this text, but one thing we know about Peter, at this point in his life, he is married. However, she's never married, okay? But he's listed, we see references to his wife in other passages of Scripture. He has a fishing business with his brother Andrew in Capernaum, which is on the north side of the Sea of Galilee, who's a fisherman by trade. And we also know from other texts, and we'll see it as we progress through the study, that Peter is incredibly impulsive. John MacArthur in his book, Twelve Ordinary Men, says about Peter that he had a tendency to rev up his mouth while his brain was still in neutral. That's one of the reasons why we like Peter so much. Is because Peter's, Peter's your friend that says what everybody else is thinking, but nobody else is crazy enough to say it. That's exactly who Peter is. Peter, as we're going to see, has a ton of incredible leadership potential. But boy, there's so many rough edges that need to be shaped. And we actually will kind of see through this study, the answer to the question, are real leaders made, or are they born, or are they made? We'll see the answer is a little bit of both. Because God gives people certainly passions, and he gives them personality traits and characteristics, but those things need over time certainly to be developed. But we'll see, we'll watch together that Jesus makes him into who he wants him to be. And if you remember, one of the themes from our study of the life of David was a quote that I gave you from Dallas Lillard, who said, the most important thing in life is not what you do, but who you become. And so over the next several weeks and months, we're going to watch as Simon becomes Peter, as he becomes who God has called him to be. Now, you've got the outline there before you, hopefully you picked that up as you walked in. If you didn't, we've got some in the back. But there's several points that I want us to think through tonight from this particular passage. The first one is, every Christian has a spiritual legacy. Every Christian has a spiritual legacy. And that wasn't always the case, right? I mean, Adam didn't, Abraham didn't. God spoke to him on a clear blue sky. He was the first in his family to come to faith. But for you and me, living on this side of history, every person, every Christian, has a spiritual legacy. And we see that with Peter. Simon Peter comes to know Jesus, but he comes to know Jesus because his brother Andrew brought him to him. Andrew comes to know Jesus because John the Baptist, the one he had been following, points him to Jesus. John the Baptist, though, knew who Jesus was because his parents, Zacharias and Elizabeth, pointed him to Jesus. So just as Simon Peter had a spiritual legacy in his life, so do you. It might not have been a family member, but it may have been. You may have been pointed to Jesus by your parents. You may have been pointed to Jesus by a brother, or a sister, or an uncle, or aunt, or a grandparent. But also though, like with Andrew, who was pointed to Jesus by John the Baptist, you may be pointed to Jesus by a pastor, or by a youth leader, maybe a teacher, or a coach, or a friend. Or if you just opened up the Word of God, God was bringing you to himself through the people who he used to pen the Scripture. Everybody has a spiritual legacy. And that's important, because it reminds us that salvation begins with God. God is absolutely sovereign in our salvation. Nobody just wakes up one morning, eats a bowl of Cheerios, and says, I think I'm going to come to Jesus today, right? I mean, God uses people in our lives to point us to himself. And when we begin to, when we're able to trace back and see the people that God has placed in our lives at just the right time in our lives, it also helps us to see not only how incredible God is, and how sovereign he is, and how he works in our lives in ways that we don't see, but it also helps us to see how much he truly loves us. When you think about the gospel and what God did for us through Jesus, we think about the history from Genesis all the way to the Gospels, and how everything was leading us to the point. And then we think about all the people that God placed in our paths to bring us to where we are today, knowing Jesus has saved and born. It absolutely will blow your mind to see how much God loved you. And of all the however many billion people in the world there are, he knew you, he knew to whom you belonged, and he drew you to himself. Every Christian has a spiritual legacy. Secondly, every Christian should leave a spiritual legacy. All of us in some way or another want to leave some kind of a legacy, right? Maybe the legacy that we want to leave is to be the top earner in our business. Or the legacy is to be the top in our profession. Or the legacy is to be the person who gave the most to the university. Or the legacy to be somebody who's really made a difference in the world. None of those things in and of themselves are bad, right? Unfortunately, all of those things, though, are temporary. It's more important to leave spiritual legacies. You know, the Bible tells us in St. Corinthians, Chapter 5, and verse 15, that Christ died for all, that those who live should no longer live for themselves, but for him who died and rose again. You see, when we trust in Jesus Christ since Lord and Savior, as Paul says, I'm crucified with Christ, therefore life is no longer about me. And life is no longer about leaving a legacy of what I've done, or what I've accomplished, or who I've influenced. But life is about leaving a spiritual legacy, things that last. Life is about eternal things. And we do that through the mission field that God gives us. So in other words, if you're a banker, God desires for you to leave a spiritual legacy at the bank. If you're a doctor, God desires for you to leave a spiritual legacy at your clinic with your patients. If you're a teacher, God desires for you to leave a spiritual legacy in the classroom and with the other teachers that work in the same school with you. But God desires for you to leave a spiritual legacy. And listen, God uses different people to leave different legacies. Next point on your outline is this, 2A. Everyone has a role. Everyone has a role. But think of this next point. Andrew was a point guard. Peter was a scorer. Andrew was a point guard, Peter was a scorer. Here's what I mean by that. We learn about Andrew here in this passage. We also learn as we continue through the Gospels that there are other people that Andrew would bring Jesus to. That's what Andrew was good at. Andrew seems to be a little bit more of a behind the scenes guy, but like a point guard in a basketball game, the point guard's role is not to score the most points. If the point guard scores the most points, then your basketball game is not going to be what it's supposed to be. Your point guard should have the most assists. It's his job to distribute. Andrew's role was to distribute people to Jesus. Now, Peter, as we see particularly in Acts and following him, Peter was a scorer, right? Peter was a communicator. Peter was the one who's standing up on the day of Pentecost, and he's proclaiming the gospel where thousands of people come to cry. We don't see Andrew doing that anywhere. We see Andrew bringing people to Jesus one to one, point guard. We see Peter scoring, right? Everybody has a role. And everybody's not supposed to be the same person, but everybody is to leave a spiritual legacy. And then point B, if Andrew had not been faithful, Peter wouldn't have been preaching in Acts, Chapter 2. I mean, can you imagine that moment on the day of Pentecost, when the Spirit comes down upon the apostles, and Peter stands up and begins to proclaim the Word of God, and thousands of people are coming to Christ? Never would have happened if Andrew wouldn't have been a faithful point guard. Everybody has a role to play, and everybody should leave a spiritual legacy. Point number three. The key to leaving a spiritual legacy is spending unhurried time with God. The key to leaving a spiritual legacy is spending unhurried time with God. You see that in the text, where the two disciples came to Jesus and asked where you're staying. Can we spend time with you? And Jesus said, come and see. And they came and saw where he was staying and remained with him that day. It's hard for us to spend unhurried time with God, because life is so busy. And oftentimes, we kind of limit unhurried time with God to what we call a quiet time, where we just get up in the morning and drink a cup of coffee, and we read a little something out of a Dozer, a book, and we go, I don't know about our day. And listen, granted, I guess it's better than nothing. But God wants so much more for you than that. You see, God wants for us to know him. And the only way to know somebody is to spend unhurried time in his presence. Look at what the Psalmist says in Psalm 105, verses 1 and 2. It's on your outline. Oh, give thanks to the Lord, call upon his name, and make known his deeds among the peoples. Sing to him, sing songs to him, and talk of all his wondrous works. Let me ask you a question, and I'm not trying to make you feel bad. It's a question for all of us. How many times do we walk out of a service on Sunday, or a night like this, or maybe something we read in the Bible, and we just kind of kick ourselves, right? Because we say to ourselves, I know, I know that I'm supposed to leave a spiritual legacy. I know that I'm supposed to be a witness at work, or the ball field, or whatever. I know I need to be doing, I just, I struggle to talk about God. All of us do, myself included. We kick ourselves because we just, there's so many opportunities that we look back on, and we say, man, I just wish that I would have been more vocal about what I believe. And the question is, well, why aren't we? And ultimately, when we look at these verses, we can see that one of the big problems is, we don't spend unhurried time in the presence of God. Because the Psalmist says, when I see his wondrous works, I praise him, I thank him, and I tell of all his wondrous works. Next point on your outline is this. The more unhurried time we spend with God, the more we will see his wondrous works and talk about them. The more unhurried time we spend with God, the more we will see his wondrous works and talk about them. How do you spend unhurried time with God? It begins with spending time in his Word. You know, people sometimes will ask me, what's a good devotional book to read? And, and you know, I, listen, there's nothing wrong with devotional books, and certainly try not to be sarcastic. But you know, ain't a devotional book, ain't the Bible, right? Psalm 1 says, how blessed is the man who doesn't walk in a councilly ungodly, nor stands in the path of sinners, nor sits in the seat of the scornful, but his delight is in the lawful Lord, and in his law he meditates day and night. He should become like a tree firmly planted by the streams of water, which yields its fruit in its season, and is leafed as not wither, and whatever he does, prospers. Remember what God told Joshua in Chapter 1, when he called him to be the leader of the Israelites? You take this book of the law, and you meditate on it day and night. Don't turn from the left, and don't turn from the right. Do you remember the words that David gave to Solomon at the end of his life, as Solomon was becoming king, and he was turning the keys of the kingdom over to him? Know the God of your father, and serve him with a loyal heart and a willing mind. Know God. The more time we spend with God, the more we know him. And the more we know him, the more we see of him, the more likely we are to talk of him. Leaving a spiritual legacy begins with spending unhurried time in his presence. And then the final point, point number four, is that God sees in you who he's always destined you to be. Point A on your outline is this. You cannot spend time with God and remain the same. Say it again. You cannot spend time with God and remain the same. Say, how do you know that? It's one of the purposes of his Holy Spirit. Romans 8, verse 29, Paul writes, whom he foreknew, he also predestined to be conformed into the image of his Son. Hear what Paul's saying? Paul's saying that those that God has called to salvation, he is predestined that they would be conformed to the image of Jesus. So how are we conformed to the image of Jesus? Through the Holy Spirit who works through his Word. And by the way, the last point on your outline is, it's a lifetime project. Paul writes in Philippians 1, verse 6, I'm convinced of this very thing, that you began a good work, and you will complete it until the day of Jesus Christ. And so what we see in John, Chapter 1, verses 35 and 42, is we see the beginning, where Andrew leaves a spiritual legacy by being a point guard, and he brings his brother Peter to Jesus. And when he brought him to Jesus, it would forever change Peter's life. This fisherman from Galilee is going to realize that God has been working in his life. God has been putting people around him to bring him to himself, and that God has a plan for Peter's life that's greater than anything he possibly could have imagined. And he calls him by the name from the very beginning. You are Simon, son of John, but I'm going to make you a rock. Peter has no idea what this entails, no idea what's about to happen. He has no idea that he's going to walk on water. He has no idea that he's going to be at the Mount of Transfiguration with Jesus and see him in his glorified state. He has no idea that he's going to see thousands of people be fed with a little boy's fish and bread. He has no idea all of the ways that he's going to be used in the book of Acts. He doesn't have a clue about what's about to happen in his life. But God says, I have a purpose for you. Jesus says, you are rock. And before anything else happens, he tells him his purpose. In the rest of the study, we're going to see him shaping him into who he wants him to be. William Barclay is a commentator that I like to read. A lot of his works are very practical, very easy to read. So if you're ever looking for a commentary that's easy to read, that's a good, that's a good set. But in his commentary on John, he tells a story. Said a man walked up to Michelangelo as he's chipping away with his chisel at a huge, shapeless rock. And the man asked him, what are you doing? To which Michelangelo replied, I'm releasing the angel that is imprisoned in this marble. That's what we're going to see in Peter's life. God's going to make him a rock, but it's going to take a lot of chiseling to get there. God's going to make him a rock, but it's going to take a lot of chiseling to get there. Remember, Dallas Lillard said, "Most important thing in life is not what you do, but it's who you become." What if, all of this time in your life, through the ups and the downs, through the struggles and the celebrations, God has actually been chiseling you into who He's always wanted you to be? You see, man, life has a greater purpose than oftentimes we realize in the day-to-day grind, which is why we need to spend unhurried time in His presence and see the bigger picture. Hope that you'll join us as we continue that next week. Let's break up. Father, we come before you again tonight, and we thank you for how you work in our lives. And for each of these men who are here tonight, we, if we truly think about it, we can see a spiritual legacy in our lives. And we want to thank you tonight for the people that you've placed in our lives to point us to you. Oh, how you must love us to orchestrate all of those events and bring in just the right people in our lives, and just the right time, with just the right message to point us on the right path. Father, I pray that you will use each of us to leave spiritual legacies as well, that we'll see our lives with such a greater purpose than just raising a good family or earning a good living. But that you'll use us to leave a spiritual legacy. Help us to accept our role, whether it's point guard or scorer. We surrender ourselves to you. Father, it brings us great comfort to know that the things that we go through in life are never wasted with you. Sometimes the chiseling hurts, no question about that. But you are always shaping us, because you have predestined us to be conformed to the image of your Son. So Father, again, we surrender ourselves to you and your chisel to bring out in us who you've always wanted us to be. Shape us, oh God, into rocks who make a difference in this world. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Thank you for coming. Hope to see you next week.